Call to order. The secretary will note that all members are here with the exception of Matt O'Brien, who has an illness in the family, will rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak under audience of citizens?
First person we have on the list is Tim Eckert.
Yeah. Just state your name and address.
Thank you. So Council Chair Lewis, esteemed members of the Town Council, I am Tim Eckert and I live at 67 Deer Hill Lane. I am here on behalf of the Connecticut Veterans Day Patriots Race Coordinator, Peter DiPiola. Along with his wife Jamie, we are committee members and I'd like to provide you with some information on the event. The purpose of the 2019 Connecticut Veterans Day Patriots Race, the junior Patriot races, and the Veterans Day event is to honor Connecticut's 213,000 veterans. The day features a four-mile run, a three-mile walk, and a three-mile ruck, all starting and ending at Patriots Park. Also, there are two events for kids: a half-mile in the park, run for the middle schoolers, and a 500-yard run for elementary-aged kids. These two events will be hosted by the Coventry Parks and Recreation Department. Located at the park will be displays of military equipment, a food canteen for runners, and spectators to enjoy the featured chili and hot dogs. Vendor and sponsor displays will be set up along the path, along the lodge, and at the band shell. The Connecticut Veterans Day race is hosted by the Women's Marines Association, the American Legion, and the Disabled American Veterans in collaboration with the Town of Coventry Parks and Recreation Department. Wendy Rubin and her staff have been a great partner in the success of this event. Proceeds from the event directly benefit the work of these organizations, as well as the Home for Heroes and Homes for the Brave. Over the last three years, we have donated $14,000 to these veterans groups and look to add $6,000 to the total this year. We are grateful for the generous support of the Town of Coventry, the Coventry Police Department, and the Coventry Fire EMS. We cordially invite the Town Council and all the Coventry residents to join us in this salute to the veterans and to serve our great country. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Good luck. I know that's always a big success.
You can get into the water section. In the water section.
David Saucer.
I was here to speak about the library, so I'll leave.
No, if you want to speak, you have to speak under audience of citizens.
I will not speak.
You can come to the next meeting, too, if you want to follow up afterwards.
Yes, I'm into seeing the presentation, so when I'm here, they cast my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Jankowski.
Joseph Jankowski, 3899 South Street, and I am trustee of the Booth and Dimick Memorial Library. I would like to thank the Coventry community for their support of our Mini Golf, Library Mini Golf event that took place on October 13th. I would especially like to support or recognize the support of our sponsors and donors. I'd like to mention Eversource Energy, which was our naming sponsor, presented by Eversource, and also the Wicked Slice Pizza, that was the pizza sponsor for the event. I think it's easy to say that a good time was had by all. I would invite everyone to please either stop by the library, where in the lobby you would see a display board, or to visit the library website, where you could find a listing of the generous sponsors and donors of the event. And it was a great success. Thanks again to the Coventry community for supporting Library Mini Golf at Booth and Dimick Memorial Library.
Thank you, Joe. It was a lot of fun for a lot of us that landed at the table.
Tough course. Suffered, I expect. I liked hole 11. That was good.
The steals of delight when the elementary school children and some of the adults made a hole in one was really fantastic.
I got an actual hole in one on 18. I just want to say I was very proud. It was a surprise to me, too.
Christine Patte.
Hello, I'm Christine Patte, 98 Brookline Road here in Coventry. I'm here to thank the Town Council for forming the Senior Housing Committee, point out that I believe this townwide effort is unique in the state, and list the difficulties the community will have to address. I've been looking at senior housing for a long time, and I'm familiar with efforts in places like Old Sabrewood, Wallingford, where church-sponsored groups have gotten together and had brought to building stage the kind of housing that I'm talking about, which is moderately priced multi-unit housing for seniors. Like me! However, I believe that Coventry is the only town in the state to address these issues from a townwide perspective. Ten years ago, our plan of conservation and development concentrated on open space and our rural heritage. Now, for 2020, we're looking to balance rural heritage that we all cherish with growth and development that is happening all around us. The best platform to honestly and rationally discuss these issues is this townwide committee. Nobody is opposed to housing for seniors, but let me just mention the contentious issues we don't like to talk about. First, money. Now, who are the two most pinch penny groups on God's green earth? Republicans and seniors. Who needs housing? Seniors. Who builds housing? Often Republican developers. Moving right along and skipping the lecture that this doctor of public health has always wanted to give on water, sewers, and the fall of the Roman Empire, the two issues the town has successfully avoided for the past decade are sewer expansion and the exclusion of multi-unit housing from the lake residential zone, which almost completely overlaps with the sewered area around the lake. We have long known that our unique-in-the-state sewer system, which is essentially a giant septic field, is bumping up against the state mandated capacity limit of 90 percent. Our highly competent WPCA staff spend most of their time tracking out every little sump pump that's discharging illegally into a sewer. Recently, the state handed us another mandate, saying our processed sewer water is discharging too much nitrogen into the lake. As the old Chinese proverb says, every crisis is also an opportunity. If we're going to be forced to do some work on our current sewer system, maybe we need to bite the bullet and expand it. I've often been asked why affordable housing needs to be on a sewer line. The answer is quite simple. If you look at the difference in sales prices between the two upscale condo, over-55 condo developments that we have in our town, Bidwell Village, which is on the sewer line, and Flanders Woods, in which each residence has its own separate septic system and costs about $100,000 more than a Bidwell Village condo. Both of them are beautiful, gorgeous, I couldn't afford them. I also wouldn't live there because they are not communities. They're Taj Mahal living places, but... As for zoning restrictions on multi-unit housing in the lake area residential zone, this is a topic that the small committee discussing the POCD, on which I'm on it, is just beginning to consider. When we first started talking about changing lake area zoning, the immediate response from left to right across the spectrum was, "We can't have developers buying lakefront property and building Taj Mahal condos!" Wasn't right. This caused us to take a closer look. Several properties of enough acreage to support multi-unit apartment-style housing have been identified. At this point, we don't know how many units would be appropriate on a given acreage, but we do know that age-restricted housing allows a greater number of units in a given area because seniors are a smaller family unit. I stress that this is just a possibility that we talked about for the first time last month. The possibility raised was to identify areas off the lakefront but in the sewered area that might be appropriate for a special zoning district allowing multi-unit housing in that area alone. And I need to say, this is so hot off the presses, tomorrow the POCD committee is going to get a copy of this little talk. We did talk about it last month. I'm not speaking out of turn, but it is so new that you just all have to know that, the possibility of a special multi-unit housing zoning district. I would like to conclude with one final statement for the record. On the day that a developer comes into the planning and zoning office with a preliminary application for this kind of housing, that is the day I resign for PZZ, shouting hallelujah, my work is done, and put my name first on the waiting list. Thank you.
Christine, if I may, just, you said nitrogen in a lake. I just want to make sure that you understand it's actually the Willmanic River and not the lake.
Oh, I...
I just don't want people to think we're...
Thank you, because a doctor of public health should not make such a mistake. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
There's no one else signed for audience of citizens. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close audience of citizens, and the first item of business is the acceptance of the minutes of October 7th. Is there a motion to accept?
Moved.
Moved.
Seconded.
By Lisa. Seconded by John. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have one, Madam Chair. Laura, on page eight. About halfway down, where it said, Lisa also said there is some precedent with waivers at Nathan Hale. The next line, I believe that should be 501(c)(3). So 501 (c)(3).
Anyone have anything else?
I have one. On page, page three. The first paragraph there, towards the end of the paragraph, fourth line up from the bottom, it says, Jonathan Hand said they want to make sure they have an organization that people will be ready to join. I believe I said something more along the line of Jonathan Hand said they want to make sure they have a single cohesive organization that more people will want to join.
Any further additions or corrections?
I have one question, another question. On the top of page four. This is about the softball field study stuff, and it lists, it lists three locations, and I wasn't sure that matched up, the three listed there. I thought, like, two of them seemed to be the same one. Maybe I'm wrong.
There's two different pieces in that.
In the gravel pit, there's two different field locations within the gravel pit.
Okay, thank you. So should it be like, it says Miller Richardson Field, the gravel pit, and the WPCA parcel. Should it say gravel pit one, gravel pit two, and the WPCA parcel?
You're correct. There's...
The transfer station and the area.
Miller Richardson Field should be clarified as the football field.
Aha, thank you. So if we could go ahead and do that, that would be great.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, all in favor of the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
I have one more. I'm sorry, I want to jump in. I assume, I know we have an electrician in the house, maybe he can jump in with me. Bottom of page five talks about how the, this is about the microgrid. One, two, three, four, fifth line up from the bottom of the page, it talks about the difference between three phases, and it said this is only one phase. I'm pretty sure we call that single phase instead of one phase. Will you back me up, Tim? All right, thank you.
One phase was said at the meeting, so do you want to make a correction to change something other than what was said?
I think to make the record more readable in the future, that we should use the common term of single phase.
How about one, and then parenthetically put, single?
Okay, sure. That's fine.
Some minutes are actually correct.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Are we changing how we're referencing the microgrid? Wasn't there a discussion at the last meeting?
That is in here, yeah, co-gen.
I understand, but are we going to start changing how we're highlighting it?
If we can remember, yes.
What was it?
Co-generation.
It's both.
Right, yeah, no, I...
I know, I just, I know we had a discussion about changing the terminology.
I think that's all I have. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there any, anything that anyone wishes to take off of the consent agenda? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is it time to...
I think exactly.
We will ask the library board to come forward. A library renovation committee, excuse me.
Do you want us up here?
Yes.
There's a lot of us.
Well, you can bring up some other chairs. Well, you can bring up some other chairs. Certainly, we would like, love to have you all up here.
How many of you are there? I can move.
No, no.
I can take notes from the audience.
Somebody can sit there also, since Matt isn't able to make it.
And there's some smaller chairs that you can bring up.
And Deb, would you like to introduce here to me?
Absolutely, thank you. Hello, everybody. Good to be here. I'm Deb Walsh, and I am the chair of the Library Renovation and Improvement Committee, which is, we're all just mostly here. We're really looking forward tonight to updating you on the progress we have made from the time, I think the charge came in December of 2018, and we were constituted in February 14th of this year. And beginning in March, we have been meeting every two weeks until the present time. So we've been in a lot of time in the last, about eight months.
And if you would introduce yourself?
I certainly will. Thank you. I really will. I'm going to say, Bill Bonney, who is a member and vice-chair of our committee, is not able to be here tonight. He's very sorry, but he's one of the not-retired folks among us, and so he is out of town on business tonight. Tim Ackert, who is, there, there he is. Tim, you know as our state representative and also a member of the running club down there, and is also an electrician and the owner of Ackert's Electric from Main Street. Dudley Brand is sitting right next to me here, and he's a retired teacher, Wyndham Tech in techno, in construction technology, right? Okay, Joe Jankowski, where's Joe?
Right here.
Right there. Joe is a retired teacher, and he is a board member of the Booth &amp; Dimmick Library and our liaison to the board. Jim Hardup, James Formally.
We're here.
Secretary to our committee. Wonderful note, right, he's a retired State Forest. John Twerdy, and you all know John, and he's been such a community helper, I think he's most recently been involved with a building project of Booth and Dimmick Works, wasn't it?
Firehouse.
He's done it all, and John Twerdy is a retired ironworker. These folks, plus our able assistants, I mean Margaret Conley, couldn't have done without her. Margaret is the head librarian, she's been with us for 14 months. She's a wonderful statistician, and she's going to give you some statistics, some of our slides in our presentation, just a bit. And of course, John Elsesser. I don't know how you could possibly do without him, we certainly couldn't have. So it's been, we appreciate them both. Early on in our process, we needed the assistance of an architectural firm, and we went to the market and did some interviews, and we secured the firm, Ken Best of DRA. Now, most of you know that Ken has been with us in previous projects. It was a wonderful thing to have Ken, because we didn't have to recreate the wall. He just simply knows everything about this library. So we're just delighted that he's here with us, and he's going to have a major time saver for us all, I think. Our charge of the committee is going to be on screen three, which you're going to see in a minute, so I'm not going to be laborious, you probably all remember most of it, but it was quite extensive that you wanted us to do. It did take a lot of time, but I wanted to stress a couple of things. We did pay attention to all the items in the charge that you brought forth to us, including things like re-envisioning of space, efficiency of space, code violations, property line issues, retaining wall deterioration and drainage, deterioration of the double-hung windows, some parking issues that are, you know, those ratios are not determined by us, they're determined by planning and zoning, but we're looking at it, and Ken will address those in detail. And in statistics, I think, slides nine through 12, Margaret is going to talk to you about things that we just found really fascinating. This is a very well-used library. It's a little jewel, I have to tell you. It's amazing how many people come to use the library. It's amazing how many people have library cards. It's amazing how many volumes we have and the variety that we have. So it's used, and I think that it genuinely contributes to coming through quality of life. And we sort of looked at that too, because this is a great little town, it's got a gorgeous leg, it's got great education, it also needs a great library. So we have just been happy to put our energies into trying to find the best solutions within our budgetary means, and I think you're going to get more detail in just a minute. Tim Ackert, we'd like to update you on state funding and funding issues.
Thank you, Deb. I'd like to get the council brief update on the library grant process. Part of the committee's charge, we proposed the state library to secure a grant for renovation of the library. This summer, that was completed. Town manager John Elsesser, also our librarian, Booth &amp; Dimmick Library, Margaret Con, and architect Ken Best, met with state librarian Ken Wiggins and presented the project overview. Traditionally, a renovation grant is a $250,000 matching, $250,000 matching grant. Because the decision to enclose the courtyard was part of the project due to the water infiltration issues, the state library considered it to be a more comprehensive than a renovation, and provided an increased grant amount, the matching grant up to $850,000. So I think that's noble in terms of the effort that went into the comprehensive plan that we were able to put together. Not we, I've got to give all credit, so the credit is due. So I'd like to, I'd like to add that the expedient work of our town staff, Margaret Con, and architect Ken Best were making the deadline for consideration for this year's grant. So thank you for your efforts and beating it in by the deadline.
Grant's question. The matching amount, is that, would that be satisfied by repairs that were previously done? Or improvements such as the chiller replacement?
So I, and I, and that's a great question. I think John might have a better answer for that. I think it's a new investment, but I'll let John, if you don't mind.
No, we're not certain, I think the safest thing to say is usually grants don't look back. It's as of the date of contract signing. So the committee, early on, did kind of freeze the elevator portion of this project, so those funds could still be used, plus some of, we'll get into it, but one of Ken's ideas to make the building kind of flow better and more efficient and be able to isolate the floors is to actually move the elevator, and he can address a little bit that the new technologies in elevators are more efficient and cost less. So almost the cost of, well, we're going to replace all the 30-year-old circuit boards, that kind of joke about, if you have a computer, that's lasted 30 years, that there's, the price difference is not huge, huge, between moving and replacing elevator. So those funds would clearly match, is the short answer. But the others, we could ask their opinion, but typically, my guess would be they will say no, but we will ask.
Okay.
Good question.
For the $850,000 grant, is there an end date to that? When does it expire?
Yes.
November 2020. November 2020.
Thank you.
So by November 2020, we have to have our share of the funds lined up.
Okay, so we don't have to have the work done, but we need to have the dollars in place.
We have to have, the signed contract that says we have our match in place.
Okay, so it's committed. Is there any thoughts to looking towards federal grants?
We have, and I have contacted Congressman Horton's office to keep an eye out for them. And Margaret did apply for a different grant.
Yes, Jerry Quaid Community Prize, we're waiting to hear back on that. That's a $250,000 unfunded grant.
Fantastic.
So she did, with very short notice, and I gave her a couple pieces, but then I went down to see if she needed more. She was diligently working really late on getting that grant out for that. As you know, grant deadlines are deadlines, but...
And she got local support, too. She did a great job, again, getting the word out, good job.
So we, the committee does continue to look at other opportunities for funding.
And I think next would be our PowerPoint presentation, Ken, and John, help us, right?
I think we're going to pass it off a little bit, so I'll let Ken start the clicker and...
Start the clicker, and Margaret's going to be helping too, just on one part.
So, Margaret, why don't you go through and explain?
Yes, so as you all know, Booth &amp; Dimmick Memorial Library is the principal public library for the town of Coventry. A little bit more into the fine details of that, Chapter 190, Section 11-24A of the Connecticut statutes defines public libraries and principal public libraries. We are designated by the municipality of Coventry as the principal public library, which means that the town is obligated to provide financial support in whole or in part to the library. We are an association library, which means while we are still public, we are managed solely by a board of trustees. This is very common in Connecticut and throughout New England. Very, very short history. When libraries in New England started, they were all membership-only, you had to pay to use the library, and they were managed privately. So that little bit of private ownership has stayed more or less as tradition. Now, we don't charge borrower fees, it's free, it's public, it's open to everybody who walks through the doors. So 43% of libraries in Connecticut are actually association libraries like us, it's not unique. With our association status, we are also a nonprofit 501(c)(3). And very briefly, with statistics, I'll go into a little bit more detail in further slides. Fiscal year 2019 was a phenomenal year for the library. We actually increased our circulation to 79,650 items. That was a 2.5% increase from last year, which is contrary to the state's trend. Most libraries actually saw a decrease in circulation over the last year. Our programs, the number of programs we offered increased by 15%, and our program attendance increased by 42% last year. We also answered more reference questions than we have ever answered on record before. So we are very, very active. And just that big number, we hosted over 120,000 internet sessions at the library, so people are using us in a variety of ways every single day. I mean, people come after hours and on the weekends to use our internet. Yes.
A couple of questions, Margaret. Thank you for those statistics. So one, when you talk about the programs, who's coming to those programs? Are they townspeople? Are they out-of-towns people? Like, do you have any sense of who is actually participating in those programs?
The majority of our program attendees are definitely in-town residents, especially our teen and adult programs. Our children's programming sees a little more variety in our attendees from surrounding towns, Willamette and Mansfield in particular.
And do you think, and maybe you don't know this, do you think that's because those children maybe are here in a daycare setting? And so it's, is it the daycare provider that might be bringing them? Or are they actually coming from out of town to come here with their parents or bringing?
So we do visits to our daycares. I don't think we have any daycares right now bringing in children. Usually, it's because people are, our story times work better with schedules. I know people have said to us, "Oh, we like you better than surrounding libraries." People think college is a little mean, or they don't want to go into Willamette. People have told us that they prefer our library over their hometown library.
Okay. But even so, you said that the majority of people attending are in-town folks.
By far, yes.
Okay. And another question, if I may, when we talk about the association, if maybe just to help understand a little bit, and especially for folks in the audience and watching, you know, through the live stream, when we talk about an association library, and I do understand that's kind of a New England tradition...
Yes.
But you said that 43% are association, which means that 57% are not.
Yes.
So what is the reasoning behind the remaining in association versus moving away from that association arrangement?
So the other type of library, we have association libraries and municipal libraries. I would, I think most libraries at their start were association libraries, and it's just been a gradual trend as libraries have become more public and available to everyone that municipalities would absorb them. The fact that we're in association, like I said, is more just a tradition.
Okay, thank you.
So just a reminder of people, that a couple key points in the charge. The charge, the committee was charged to look at the Kermit's Building Inspection Report, which is done on safety, Kermit is our insurance company, on our safety issues, including some water and electrical cords and other safety issues within the library, to look at the energy audits, to look at mold reports, and the capital budget requests that have been in our capital budget stream for a number of years, like roof replacement, carpet replacement, furnace replacement, and air chiller were also in there, but were addressed by a different committee. And also then look at the past plan to see what components of that were still vital and important to think about. So they were asked to look at the grant reimbursement, and which Tim Ackert has reported that we did, and report back in a timely fashion. So we were doing it to make sure we got into the next library grant round. Instead of having to apply for the next grant, we had a modification of our current grant. So otherwise, we would have been here in August and would have had to fill out a whole new application and wait till January of this coming year to find out. So we circumvented having to reapply and go through that process again. So that was one of the major charges. And then the committee shall also utilize funds appropriated to assisted development, and that's where we hired, after, as Deb mentioned, interviewed two different architectural firms and decided that Ken had the best knowledge of the project and was most prepared for that interview. So, and I highlighted, the plans shall be limited to generally working within the existing building footprint, including the courtyard area and necessary site improvements. So the plan you'll see later on fits that requirement, that it's within the existing footprint, including the courtyard. And we did not have to go into a lot of other necessary site improvements at this time. Also, as the chair mentioned, the chair of the committee mentioned, we need to touch base with planning and zoning a little bit in WELTS Commission about some of the site improvement issues. So we could kind of move on to the next slide.
I'm sorry, John, can I answer a question? So, and if you don't mind, I just wanted to go back, I realize I have one more question about the association versus municipality. Is there a difference in fiscal responsibility between association and municipality?
So back on the first slide where it said that public libraries, no matter whether they're association or municipal, receive financial support in whole or in part from local tax funds. Generally, with a municipal library, you're looking at 100% funded by the taxpayers. Right now, we are 97% funded by the taxpayers, and fundraising efforts by the board make up that remaining 3%.
So generally, municipal, Ken said the word, municipal libraries don't generally do fundraising then?
They do, but the fundraising isn't put towards their operating budget, it's put towards projects.
I see.
They often have a friends of the library group that do it. One of the biggest differences is really in employee relationship, that frankly, if you looked across the board, municipal library departments cost more, because they're municipal employees with the municipal fringe benefit package, typically unionized. So it would frankly cost considerable a lot more if they were town employees, which is not fair to the employees, but that's the tax.
All right. So basically, then, if we were a municipal library, then it would become a larger line item in our budget?
Significantly.
To receive essentially the same service.
Yes.
So we just pay more.
As was on one of the slides, we kind of, I think, went over it, or it's coming up, we have three librarians that all have master degrees in library services, which for a library our size is phenomenal. So grants and fundraisers, Tim already went on about the state grant. The library trustees have dedicated the mini golf event towards the building project. We have some energy lighting grants through Eversource coming into, that might offset some of the costs that are in the budget that you'll see later, but they're replacing all the lighting and doing some energy efficiencies in the building. As we move some things around, those lights may need to be relocated, depending how fast we go, we may hold off on some of that, but we already have some grants secured for that, and we continue to seek other grants that we mentioned, one already, and we keep an eye out for others. So we continue that effort.
Question? I got a lot of them, John. This is paper, four more.
I'm just thinking, if we should let them do the presentation and then come back, what does everybody feel? Do you want to be able to ask the questions when the, is the slides on, or do you want to wait till the end?
I think this format's working pretty well.
It's okay, all right. For the mini golf, I was just curious, will you, will there be a report out as far as the dollar is raised for something, that event, or just curious?
When, when the fundraising amount has been finalized, it'll be reported to the board of trustees at their monthly meeting.
Okay.
And following that, it'll be in the minutes of the board of trustees. And following that, it'll be in the minutes of the Board of Trustees and therefore reportable to, well, anyone in the public.
Thanks, John.
Okay. So a couple of things. There's been a lot of talk about the 250,000 or so that was actually given to the school building and Building Efficiency Committee, Energy Efficiency Committee. So the air chiller was replaced, the air conditioner. The old unit actually failed before the new unit arrived. So there was some temporary delays, some closings, and some interim adjustments that needed to be made at additional extra expense. But when we said that it was going to die, we weren't lying, and it just exceeded our expectations in going too soon. The 30-year boiler was replaced this summer with a new energy efficient boiler. And we were able to add in some dehumidification into the lower air handling at the same time to try to stop those dehumifiers that were trip hazards and then actually sometimes would spill over. The 30-year-old oil tank, which was beyond its life under DEP regulations, was removed this summer as part of the school oil tank projects with the same vendor as a change order. We got a good deal on it, and we replaced it with an above-ground unit, 750-gallon unit that fits in nice there. And we're actually able to use the old air conditioner pad, the concrete pad from the old air conditioner, to the new oil tank. So it worked out well. The elevator upgrade, I mentioned. That needs circuit boards and phones and some other things. It's still working, but there will be a massive failure. And if it fails, you know, we'll have to deal with it because otherwise we're in an ADA violation. But right now, we put it on hold while we review this whole plan to see what it, whether it's going to proceed ahead. And hopefully, we don't have the same fate as the air conditioner. But there, again, and as Ken goes through, he can describe the elevator and the new concepts with elevators. You don't need the big rooms and everything else like you used to. So you can go ahead. Next slide.
John, I got a question. So with all the funding that's authorized already to do this work, how much funding remains?
It's about 100,000.
Okay. So about 150,000 has already been spent on the top three projects? Excellent.
On the elevator, I'm just curious, is that used quite often? The reason I ask is because I'm just concerned if it fails, well, somebody's in there.
We'll get them out.
Yeah, it is used with regularity.
It is, okay.
Lots of, I mean, you know, as mentioned earlier, the building's not really efficient. You have to find the elevator in the middle of the building to go downstairs. So everyone with a stroller has to like weave their way through. It's not logical where the current elevator is. And it also means that it was another reason why you couldn't isolate out and use the community room, because the whole library would have to be open to use the elevator, or we'd be in violation of ADA. So that's one of the reasons the committee has talked about it, alternative plan. And we'll get to, but why don't we, unless you have something else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Let's go on. So Margaret, why don't you go through what you live with?
So the first picture on the left here shows your view right when you enter the library. As John just mentioned, the elevator is not in sight. The stairs are not in sight. At the very basic basis of what libraries and librarians stand for is accessibility in all forms, access to information, access to, you know, the physical building itself. So right off the bat here, Margaret's doing a great job. Very often, we get questions, directional questions, which should not happen at the frequency that it does with programming. Since our community room is downstairs, people have to find their way to get downstairs. And once they get downstairs, they have to ask directions again. So as John said, it's not a logical layout. The space could be utilized better. The middle frame there is, demonstrates again some of our water intrusion problems. A lighting fixture was actually there. And in January of this year, one of our librarians walked by and felt some water drip on her and noticed that the light was hanging down. So very quickly, Akert Electric came, removed the fixture for us. And we have been working with the town to get up on the roof and get the leak addressed before we put that fixture back up. Part of the charge of the committee has been our networking and our computer issues. The building that we are in now was in 1980, built in 1989, before widespread use of computers. So we are not...
Ken, can you just point out the wire and the bumble?
We kind of added as we went along, as we added computers to the building, as technology developed. And we haven't had the opportunity to really designate space and designate resources to properly...
I'm just in the way of their seeing the screen.
To properly address the issue.
And Margaret, just to speak to the middle with the water intrusion, and again, for the benefit of folks who may be new listening to the presentation on the library, I do recall that when there is water in there, and it can be significant sometimes, that it is the librarians, the ones that John mentioned with master's degrees, who are basically down there with wetbacks getting up that water.
Yeah.
So it's not that we have a maintenance crew that comes in to do it or are able to pay for someone to come in. That it is the librarians taking time away from their duties, helping families and children during it, correct?
So-called master vacuums.
So question with the water intrusion.
Yes.
My understanding that the water intrusion was a subterranean?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yes, we're going to get to that.
This is a second one.
This is a roof leak.
Great.
So this is, with the exception of this photo right here, the other three are all areas adjacent in some capacity to the courtyard. So at the top left, the tiles there off the courtyard, the drainage, it leaks through the tiles, and it leaks actually through the window panes. Downstairs here, the pictures of the door. If you walk through that door, you're into the courtyard. The main entrance up above to the left just pours water. Right down there, the drainage is, it's not adequate. It comes into the children's room. You can't see well in this photograph, but there's water damage all along the carpet in significant storms. We are close up to where that photograph was taken, sometimes even into the play area, which is not pictured on the right. Significant storms. We have, we do have to shut off a significant portion of our children's room.
And I think I also recall that you've had to replace pieces or sections of the carpet?
Correct.
And is that, again, your staff doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
Now with the, and it doesn't fix the water intrusion, with the new dehumidification downstairs, is it helping?
We have noticed a difference, yes. It's not as, you can't feel the dampness as much, and that musty smell has subsided a little.
And there has been limited mold discovered in one of the closets, and we just removed the ceiling tiles in that area. So the remediation was easy, because we were able to just throw the ceiling tiles out. But we know that mold is starting to get in there. But the mold report fortunately was very positive right now. But the concern is when you have water...
We are well at the normal levels, so. As I said, our program attendance increased by 42%, which I just think is phenomenal. The two photos on the right were from this past fiscal year. We had a slime program and our ice cream social. On the left, this was from the previous fiscal year where we had a magician in. And if you notice, there are no parents in the picture, because we could not afford to have parents in that room without exceeding our maximum capacity. So parents waited on the outside while the children got to enjoy the program, and that is somewhat of a common occurrence. It's difficult for us to have to make things not so exciting so that we're not facing overcrowding issues. Isn't what we like to do, but our community room is well-used, and it is at the point where we can't do as much as we could.
What is the maximum capacity?
75. And I'll briefly go through this. A lot of this just features the statistics I went over in the beginning, but in comparison to other libraries. I selected 17 libraries in the state based on wealth ranking, population, and just their vicinity to Coventry. The table on the left just lists the towns, their population, and their wealth ranking.
You see that? Have you?
We'll email out this to the council tomorrow.
Coventry has 58% of the population with library cards. That is pretty high for the state average. Coventry, highlighted in purple, shows how we're doing compared to our peers. Just a visual representation. Again, our programs, I'm very proud of our programming this year. In comparison to bigger libraries, Killenly, Putnam, Mansfield, Colchester, we're right up there with them. And the number of programs offered and program attendance, we did a little better than Talladega.
Maybe some of those Talladega people are coming in.
Next slide, please. Yes.
Go back one. Wanted to point out on this one, when we, right at the beginning, right at the beginning of the slideshow, there was a listing of statistics. And I think it's kind of helpful when you look at the number of residents with cards to look at the statistics as well. The items circulated were 79,650 as well. So significant number. The number of visitors to the library was 46,497. And the number of reference questions was 7,789. So again, those numbers, when you see the number of people that are car holders, it really is pretty significant numbers relative to the use of the library.
Our population is 12,000 or thereabouts.
Yes, I have to agree that that really shows that it's a library that people use, and it's a library that has relevance for people in town. Thank you for those stats.
Just a couple more, and then I'll hand it over to Ken. As I mentioned, we had over 120,000 Internet sessions. That was on our Wi-Fi. 17,539 sessions on our desktop computers in the library. We have more desktop computers available to the public than most of the other libraries studied here. And again, more sessions used than most of the libraries featured, which again, shows the need for us to update our networking and the power spaces utilized to provide technology to our people, our residents. Next slide, please, Ken. And since 2010, 32 libraries in the state have undergone some sort of renovation construction or new building project. It's relevant in the state. Other towns are supporting these kinds of projects. Our neighbors have been doing it. Columbia in 2016, Talladega in 2017, and Willamantic also in 2017 have put, have supported renovation projects. And Putnam, Bloomfield, and Lebanon are also planning construction projects at the time. And I'll pass it along to Ken. Thank you.
All right. So starting off with the existing plans. So on the left, we have the upper level plan and the lower level plan over here. What's interesting, and John had touched base on this, but if you look where the stars are. So we have the entrance to the library up here, the elevator over here, and the stairs over here. So getting to that lower level, especially if you remember the photograph with the stacks, you can't see where you've got to go to, to get to the programming room. And that's also the route that the kids had to take to get into the space as well. The other thing that's pretty remarkable is the number of restrooms. One on the upper level and one on the lower level.
And that's, that's number of toilets.
Two, for the size of the building. And there were some other things that we had to look at. Obviously, we were looking at replanning some of the space. And one of the big items was the workroom and circulation desk were kind of tight. There really wasn't enough space here. The way the layout was in the adult library, or is in the adult library, kind of is a barrier to finding things.
Yeah, you have to really kind of work your way through them.
You have to work your way through it to find where you're going.
It's good for mini golf, though.
I was going to say, not just with a putter in your...
And then we've got some spaces towards the front of the building, which are a little bit underutilized. So to be able to utilize those more, you know, so they became a part of the library would be a good thing. On the lower level, if I mention the coding here, this is the crawl space, which is space that can't be used. And mechanical spaces are over here and here. And then there's some staff areas that wrap around the program room with the stair that really isn't used to get up to the main level. And then the rest of the space is the children's library and the program room. The children's library, it's a good-sized space. It's a bit cramped in areas. There's the diagonal shelving, which is a little confusing as well. So we've looked at those things. And then we have the water issue. That's the waves forward. The water issue in the courtyard that we need to address as the water coming into the building. And so the thing we were looking at was to build into that courtyard area, use the retaining wall that's there, extend that up. There's a little bit of retaining wall down at this end that's too low that we would take out and replace that. But we could build on top of that wall. We change the drainage, eliminate the drainage under the courtyard area, and remove that to the outside of the building. And that gives us an opportunity to expand the space. But then, when we were looking at the stairs and the elevator, the thought was, wouldn't it be great if you came into the library under the present roof? If we enclosed that present roof area, that we could come into the library and have the stair and elevator right at that point to give you direct access to the lower level?
So are you saying that's where you, where you enter the library? What part exactly are you talking about?
It's the part, I think it's the part that currently has no walls.
You know, you...
So like the foyer outside.
And there's a canopy, and the stair, and it's all open. And then you go in through the doors into the building. So, you know, right now, this is open. And you come up the stairs or up the ramp, in through the doors into the vestibule. So, but if we can enclose this, then we could make that space...
All right, that's exactly what I was asking. Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was picturing. Okay.
So this is the overall, I'll call it the master plan. And so as you can see, we have a new entry point on the side of that area. So it's under the roof, we're enclosing that area. We come in through the vestibule. We'll relocate the display case into the vestibule area. These stairs will not be usable. They were just, we're just going to leave them there. There could be a sitting area.
Planters.
Somebody's waiting for a ride or whatever, they could sit there. But then, as you come into the vestibule, you then have a choice of going into the library or taking the stair down to the lower level, or coming into this lobby, into the elevator, and then into the library. Now, the reason for this lobby is that we can't have the elevator and the stair in the same enclosure. They have to be separated. So you've got to have that additional wall in there. And there's also a book return. So if somebody's returning children's books, they can just drop it through the wall. And then when we come into the library, what we've done is to take the major portion of the stacks and put them back where the young adults and director's office is. So this is really all your nonfiction stacks, periodicals, that sort of thing. The seating is now sort of mostly located in this area. So when you come into the building, you can now look out... So when you come into the building, you can now look out of windows. And we did have a plan to open up this wall, but that hasn't made it in the budget yet. We're still, we're tweaking the budget. So that's, that's a nice to have, and it would be, actually it'd be wonderful to have when you come into the building to have a large window at the end that you can see right to the outside as opposed to little residential scale windows. And then right in this area are new books and the AV materials, the DVDs and books on CD, that sort of thing. We did add a portion to the workroom, so we're doubling the size of the workspace to make it a little easier to operate there. We do have a room dedicated to the IT. So instead of having wires hanging in the space, there's a room specifically for that. And then the circulation area, which has great views of the seating, the entry, coming into the building. Fiction area remains where it currently is. And then as we get into the original building, there's a couple of alcoves that we could use as study spaces. And then the plan is to put doors onto these rooms so they can become a conference room. They could be just a reading area, they could be a quiet study space. So, you know, to attract people to use those rooms. We're also dealing with code issues. Because we don't have a sprinkler system for the building, we need to provide areas of rescue. This is for, if somebody had a wheelchair, it's a place where they could go. You know, they can actually exit out through the main entrance. But if they're down at this end, it gives them a safe place to wait for the fire department to come and get them. So we have the area of rescue here. We've also got some quiet study rooms where the stair currently is located. So that floor would be filled in and we'll have some quiet study. And quiet study is probably one of the highest demand items in libraries that we're doing today. I mean, we'd work on a building that was built, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago like this one that didn't have any spaces like that. And we'll, you know, they want more and more and more of them, they can't have enough. So, you know, with the rooms here and these rooms, we're kind of going a long way to meeting that demand. Now, to the addition over here, we now have a nice room for mysteries, which is a popular collection within the library with some seating. We've got a large window here to make the space attractive to people driving in up to the building. They'd be able to seat into the library. And again, we've added restrooms on this level.
That's usually toilet.
T O I A. Toys, yes.
Thank you. Ken, are those front, the interior stairs in the original structure, are those accessible now?
No, those are not accessible. There'll still be staff, for staff only, but it is, there are stairs.
They're too narrow and they're too steep to be used by the public.
Any questions on the first floor? And then for the lower level, this is where there's quite a few changes. Now, as I mentioned, the elevator and stair are now at this end of the building. So if we were to move the program room to that end of the building, that is, could now be accessible when the library is closed. So people can use it, you know, on hours when, you know, after the library closes. Or if there's a program that runs beyond the library hours, that can still be, still be used.
And how many people would that hold? Because you said it was, what, seventy or seventy-five?
This is, this is over a hundred in here.
Adding about twenty-five spaces.
Yeah.
Wow.
And again, we've got restrooms we're adding here too, so the program room has, has restrooms. Another area of rescue at this location for the staircase. And then we've lost the children's area up here. So we moved that down to where the current program room is. We've opened up this wall, which is basically a stud partition that we removed and moved the desk down. So the desk is, as people come into the children's room, the desk is directly ahead and they have a reasonable view into all of the kids' areas. Now, we've moved the preschool area to the addition. That infill, you know, part of this is gonna be foundation wall and then we'll insulate the wall around it and finish it with sheet rock. But I think I mentioned, there'd be drainage around the outside of that to take away any water in that area. So the preschool is located over here. And then the juvenile area, the stacks in this location. And we've got a computer table down here and some more seating for the juveniles. So they're sort of spread out. And then lastly, the young adult area is down in the bottom section. And they, this is currently the staff room that isn't used. So that will become an activity area, a craft area, that sort of thing, for the young adults. Now, there were a few other code issues that we came across. This door, for example, is only, I think it's six foot high. It should be at this.
Joe can't get out of it.
So that needs to be moved vertically, so we'll have to take a section of granite out and expand the door up. And then we end up, you know, gaining storage space, which a library can never have enough storage. The elevator would be self-contained, so everything is in the shaft. You don't need to have a machine room with a big old tank. It can all be within the, in the shaft. Some manufacturers, or one manufacturer, the controls are in the door jamb. And if they need to get to them, it just slides out and they can access them. Others might require a door on the end to gain access to the controls. And yet others might require a small space. So we've kind of accommodated the three varieties of the newer elevators within that area. So this room is the current machine room for the elevator, so that then becomes an available space. It's more for storage for the library than, you know, a usable public space, but still it's a game space. The program room, we will have some sinks at dual heights, one low for kids and one adult height. And fortunately, we've got a underground, under slab sanitary line running through the building here. So we can just extend that up to pick up the toilets and pick up the sinks. So we're trying to be economical in how we're looking at utilities within the building as well.
Ken, with the changes that you're making to both floors, will it add bookshelves? Will you have more space for books?
There's actually more space, yeah.
Because when I was there a couple of weeks ago or last week, I noticed on the upper level in the front part of the structure, the original structure, I've noticed that you're just kind of putting books on tables just wherever you can find space right now.
There's a different reason for that.
Yeah, we, the board is taking care of this issue, but there is a sinking of the shelves in the front parlor and it was advised that we took the weight of the books off the shelves, so that's why they're on the tables for the time being.
In this area, here and over here as well.
So it'd be all new shelves on top of it. In addition to being more shelf space, it would be new shelves, you're not repurposing the existing shelves?
So in the plans on the upstairs, the historic parlors, all circulating materials will be removed from there. So the shelves will stay, but they won't be used. Does that answer your question?
I guess so, yeah, thank you.
But we, you know, out of necessity, the stacks and what have you, we're gonna reuse as much as we can.
Okay, and you can, that's safe to use, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And they're saying, we don't have a huge budget for furniture, but there is, there's a little bit of money in there to, you know, kind of expand what the library has or if we need to adjust some shop dimensions to make them fit within the spaces, we should be able to accommodate that. And then back to the, I mentioned the sinks here. We also have a large storage area, so instead of just seats, these little rectangles are actually intended to be seats. Those could be moved away and then folding tables set up with chairsy tables, depending on whether it's a kids' program, an adult program, and what kind of presentation. I think that's, that's it, the interiors. And then the elevations. So if you look at the front of the building, we have the historic library right here. And then this is the courtyard infill. So you will see some concrete foundation with an angled line. But it follows, at least the slope on the top of the existing follows the ground line. So, you know, it would seem to make sense when you see it from the outside.
That also gets light into that play area.
Oh, yes, yes, down, yeah, into the, we've got windows into the front, young kids, the preschool area. They're not very high, but, you know, they're enough to get some daylight into that space. And then in the mystery area, we've got some, you know, larger windows. As we turn, this, this wall is angled. We've got to match the driveway and the shape of the foundation. But we, we kind of work the windows around the shelving as well, so we get as much light into that space. And again, there's a window down into the lower level here. And then these two windows are just into the stair, so it's not a dark space when you go down. The entrance, so we have the current stairs here. The opening will be filled with glass, so it'll be a bright space when we go into the building. And then we've got to do some infill work in this area and around on the end. And we, the choice material is brick for the addition, which means that we would probably, at least we'd like to replace a little bit of the concrete block with brick. So at least from this side of the building, it's primarily brick when you come up the driveway.
Can I ask a question?
Any questions? Okay, on the cost estimate, we did get a, an independent cost estimator doing a detailed takeoff of the project. And after looking at it, there were a number of things that, there were some, I don't wanna call it guesses, but there was some of the things like electrical work, mechanical work, it was based upon a unit price. And, you know, thirteen plus thousand square feet at X number of dollars a square foot. And I looked at what we really needed to do in those areas and I did shrink some of those numbers down. There were some items that we cut back on, like the built-in cabinets. We got rid of a lot of that to simplify things. But anyway, we got the, we got the budget down. So after the, what was down to here, a couple of things, the parking lot. We haven't, that wasn't really included as far as any work on the parking lot, whether that would be expanded. There is some space along the back where we could probably put in, I'm not sure, eight to ten spaces, something like that.
A little bit more, but the, but, so there's a kind of a simple addition along the back line that people are parking there already, whether it's stag gravel or millings or something like that. Or the parking lot could be redesigned as in the original proposal, because that, that could still work. It's just a matter of whether we actually will need that many parking spots and that's where we need to talk to planning and zoning. So there's options on the parking, but right now that's not included in our discussion. And that will be something that I think, the next visit back to the council, we'd want guidance on when we get some information from planning and zoning, whether that to do now or do later, or see how it works and type of issue.
And then we've got the flat roof. We have a flat roof for the expansion area, but we haven't replaced the remainder of the roof, which is now having problems with leaks and what have you. So the flat roof area is, is not included. We did, one of the things that we did do was to remove some of the block wall so that the new roof will line up with the existing roof. So it will make drainage a lot easier, we're not dealing with two separate areas to drain. It will be the, the one, the one area.
Excuse me, Ken. You just said there's a flat roof on the expansion area? Are you talking about the nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight expansion?
Well, the eighty, yeah, you've got a pitch roof in the middle and then this flat roof on the sides. And then when we do the courtyard infill, that will have a flat roof as well. So we've, the, there's a parapet wall that runs between the two, so we've taken that parapet wall off, at least in our budget, so that the roofs will line up. And that just makes the drainage a little bit easier to deal with.
It's not a huge square footage of flat roof up there.
No, no.
Thank you.
So after the grants and the other funding sources that we were sort of talking about, we're down to a project of one point five million. Now, I know you've had success in town with the firehouse and public works as far as doing those on a construction manager or design-build type process. And, you know, with that process, we can probably do some more value engineering, which is basically cost savings on the project through efficiencies here. And we might be able to get that number down by three, three and a half, or three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, which will give us a number in the one point one million area.
So that's the net cost to town. If we get more grants, that would be reduced, or like, as we follow here with the electrical grants and things like that, that number will come down?
So earlier it was discussed that there's, we're currently holding some hundred thousand dollars in the money. Is that already factored in? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I know the question's gonna come up, so now's a good time to find that out.
So just to kind of recap, you know, we would have to spend eight hundred and fifty to get the eight fifty. What we're saying is to do this plan as we envision right now, if we work hard at it, we think it'll be that one point.
One point one.
One point one instead of eight fifty. Our hope and goal was originally to try to see whether we could do it for eight fifty and I'm at eight fifty. We just can't do it without sacrificing some elements so far, I mean, we'll keep looking at it.
I mean, it's pretty bare bones, is based upon where, what we know today. I mean, it's, we kept the numbers, made the numbers, you know, looked at the building and everything and tried to keep everything as low as possible.
And we do wanna do it right and we do wanna make sure we correct what needs to be corrected.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, it's really, it boils down to the fitting out of the space, you know. The millwork items, we've cut back quite a bit on millwork, which is, you know, trenching cabinets and things like that.
Circulation desks.
Circulation desks. We've got to do those very, very simply. So, you know, we, we are compromising. I don't wanna make you think that you're, you know, it's, it's this like. I don't want to make you think that you're, you know, it's, it's this like super high quality, but the construction, the hard construction, has to be high quality, so...
Yeah, we don't want to have to address more problems in the short future.
No.
Definitely want to take care of the water intrusion thing in a way that will enhance what's there.
Right, and we have to meet energy codes.
Oh, yeah.
Related to that work as well, so...
Make it cheaper to operate.
Yeah, now, you, I do have another question. So you've brought up code work, that there's some code concerns. If this doesn't get taken care of, what happens because of the code issues?
You know, we had mentioned there were code works, the area of refuse issues will have to be looked at, to clarify where we are with, with that right now, and it's likely that we would have to still do at least that door.
Okay.
And I can't explain why, since 1989, that door's there, and how that got through three building officials ago, although I know, because I didn't hire that building official, it was temporary. So I think some of those issues are going to have to be done on a piecemeal basis. And just, you know, I think the council knows that, I talked to a construction firm before we started that, and looked at how to mitigate the water in the, in that courtyard, and it basically said putting a roof over it is the most cost-effective way to do it, because otherwise you're, you're excavating a lot of material to try to figure out how to re-drain that area. And, you know, so, you know, if you just did a flat roof right over it, that's one option, but the cost of that wall for one other higher, higher level is, is not a lot. But I think, you know, there was discussion about building efficiency at the council here, and how to make the building more usable. And I think that this plan, with that stair, central staircase right at the entrance that goes down, and the, moving the elevator, which is again, 20 to 30,000 dollars, probably more than just fixing the old elevator, just makes the project work better, it makes the building functional, and I think the room is actually 110 years around that diagram. So we pick up a little extra space. Still, when you're, you're in there with a bunch of kids, it's still going to seem small, but it's bigger than what we got, and it allows it to be used by different functions. So it's not going to be a, you know, people get images of a huge room, you know, just the building code in this room is 64, you know, so just to put in perspective, you know, it's not even twice as large as this room. And do you feel comfortable in this room with the number of people we have in, and I know it's already hot? But, so, you know, perception and reality are two separate things. You hear a number, but then when you're actually in a place with that, and if you start putting tables in there, you cut that in, I don't know, kind of, what's the...
Oh, significantly lower.
Is it half, or, or more?
Probably more than half.
So when, once you start doing an art and craft project or something where you have tables set up, you know, you're, you're talking about a lot of the space, just look at the space we're losing with this table, so...
So just getting back in terms of the code work, a final comment on that, that if this were to not be approved, and I know you're still finalizing the numbers, if this were not to be approved, the code work still needs to be done without benefit of the grant.
Right.
John, so next?
Oh, Julie.
Thank you for coming, we've been waiting to hear from you guys. How much square footage will we gain by enclosing that?
Courtyard.
Courtyard.
Call it the well. Yeah, it was, I, I think it's, what's the best, it was probably 2,000 square feet.
I think it was 19, or 19... It might be, you have to, the two floors are different sizes, because...
Yeah, always got the best of the old ones, but it doesn't.
And early on, when we started hearing about this project, we're going to try to do it in sections. At this point, the way you're talking about it, does the library have to close?
No, Ken can address that.
Yeah, we, we looked at a phasing, and it's sort of unfortunate, but the, the infill of the courtyard will need to be built, built in two phases, because you have, I can go back here. On the lower level, we need to get a second, have a second means of egress for the kids, which we've got one out through this area, and currently, there's an exit out through here into the courtyard. So the thought is to actually build the elevator and stair first.
Okay.
And leave this open as a courtyard, so that can be, you know, we've got to separate obviously the, the kids from the construction. But once the elevator and stair is complete, the kids can use that as the exit, and then we can finish off the addition. But we, we tried to sort of make it work relative to keeping people using the building during construction.
So there will likely be some, I mean, to be honest, it's likely that there'll be some, some closures, just for things like carpeting and everything else. The library did experiment with pop-up libraries a couple of years ago, and if it's like a couple of weeks to get something like that done, we could even just reserve, you know, for a place to be a temporary library and move some of the new books and collections and do something like that there, so we don't have to rent space. But it's going to be short-term, unlike the other project where it was almost a year and a half, and they were in, what is it, Cracker Barrel or Cheese Barrel, whatever the, the name was, it's before my time.
Cracker Barrel Corner Food Store.
Next to what was then McNathen's.
Yeah, that was definitely a, my stepfather ran it.
Oh, great.
So they had rented that as a temporary library, and then other books were stored in tractor-trailer for a while. We're not going to be doing that. But even, like, moving bookshelves and stuff like that, you, you clear the area out, you put the new carpeting in, and there's companies that can actually come in and pick up the shelves and move them with the books on them and put it, put them back down. But, you know, so there's a lot of, kind of, libraries have a lot of specialty things that you have to deal with, but there'll be some, definitely some interruptions, and construction projects are never pleasant. Just ask any town hall employee, he has to find out where bathrooms open or not. But there'll be some inconveniences, but generally, we don't have to abandon and move out.
And then when do you plan on going to the town for borrowing the money?
Well, if we go back to the next steps, kind of, the charge kind of defines the next steps for the charge. The council may wish, right now, that this isn't a charge, but the council may wish to further, provide further directions to the committee about this concept plan, and, authorize us to go to planning and zoning and the wetlands commission to get their input, because that wasn't specifically in a charge at this point. And then the committee would come back to the, the council with their findings and rationale and, and any revisions that may come out of those discussions, and that would be, I don't know, December at the earliest, more likely January, depending how the, the schedules fit. And then after that, the charge says, upon acceptance of the committee's recommendation by the board of trustees and the town council, the town council shall determine a funding and, and phasing plan. Suggested notifications from both groups, or modifications from both groups can be considered by the committee, and after the council authorization proceeds, the committee shall present the project, a concept at a public forums to educate the, the public. And after that education, if the proposal receives a favorable authorization by the council, you move on to the other kind of town meeting vote stage. So, kind of, earliest timeframe might be kind of a February timeframe, absolute earliest, and then whatever, you know, it's up to, it's up to the, the council to make a decision if it proceeds and when it proceeds.
Any other questions?
Excellent.
Covered the board of building ownership.
So, this issue keeps coming up from time to time. The library board of trustees has committed, just as they reaffirmed their commitment, to transfer ownership of the building to the town as previously agreed to. So if you want to look at it as, as one, one way, is the town, in a sense, is, is adding to but buying the building. We're getting an asset that has value, so...
But that goes back to our earlier discussion, it then becomes a municipal library?
No.
No.
We just own the building.
I see, okay.
And my last job was in the town of Avon, the, the town owns the building, but it's still the library association.
Saying terms apply, you know, at any point, a decision is made that it's no longer in the function of the library, it reverts back, is that, is something, some sort of...
Yeah, and part, the reason for that, just to be clear, is, is that the Booth, them and family gave this property to, to the library association, that formed, that was in a little kind of outhouse-sized building, and they have to honor those estate issues. So they have to assure that the continuity of it being a library remains, so that if, for some reason, the town doesn't want a library anymore, then the property would have to revert back to somebody that would run a library.
Otherwise, it's just an empty building? Like, am I seeing it right?
I, I mean, the issue is, and these all probate issues, you know, there's no clear issue, I mean, you end up usually in court for years, I mean, look at Lebanon, who just decided who, a couple of weeks ago, decided who owns the town green.
So, with the 1989 expansion project, right, what, what was the scope of that, and how does that relate to the, the current structure? You know, if we're looking at a map or a...
Which part of it is, was the note?
Yeah.
Six fat lines, go back to that one.
There it is. So, this front, let me do it the simple way.
No, that's fine.
The, the front portion, including this little part here, that's the original building, so everything back here was the 1989.
So my question along those lines is, where the water intrusion is in the areas affected, given that this is 1989 construction, foundations, has there been any consideration for the crumbling foundations issues, does it might relate to this? And if that's the case...
I haven't seen anything, at least in the courtyard area. And I don't think anywhere else around the building, there's no indication...
Or in the boiler room, there's no, no...
The downstream ownership of the building and...
But it should be noted that, and I was just coming in here, one of my first public acts was actually the groundbreaking for this building that I didn't know anything about, but, boy, my hair was long enough.
A lot darker too.
It was, a little bit. It's wild. But, but...
It's getting warm in here.
It is getting... But the whole issue of ownership was, was discussed at that point too, and there's a, a, a letter in the town clerk's file from then, town attorney Abbot Schwabel, that basically said, you know, if the library goes under, basically, they have to give us the, the things anyway because of this probate issue. So the response there was, you know, at that point, and I wasn't in any involvement, except I've read this letter, that basically said, don't worry about it, because of this whole relationship in the state of Connecticut to library associations, the town per the state statutes, it was like, and I think at that point, they reaffirmed that they were the public library for the town. It had already happened earlier, but they kept on blowing on that, but, and I think their issue there was, at one point, we had two libraries and that whole Porter Library issue. But with them, it was declared to be the principal library, but the attorney, the town attorney at that point said, don't worry about ownership, because it would revert to town no matter what. But the, the library board of trustees and the public seems to feel that, let's just get that squared away now, like we did for North Coventry Firehouse, which was owned by the North Coventry Firehouse Association Incorporated, and they gave us the land when we built the firehouse. So, you know, that is kind of where we're heading these days. Although we don't, we don't own the land of the, the substation and, and commentary volunteer fire association, they own the land and we built our building on it. So it, it can go both, both ways when you tell them that these associations, and the fire associations are a really good example of a, a association like the library. They have their own board of directors, but we give them money, and they provide service to our public, that's their purpose. So when people say this is unusual, it's like, it's no more unusual than us having fire departments. That's the culture and the history of newly government, and it changes over time, and, and those opportunities, you, you make those policy decisions as you go forward. But one way to look at the, back to the point of one way to look at it is, in a sense, we're building a, renovating a building, but as part of that, we're also buying it.
Right, and I guess, back to my point, a lot of the real estate transactions happening, especially in northeast Connecticut in this area with crumbling foundations, I would just want to know that we're doing the right things, taking the right steps to protect ourselves, if there was pyrotite identified in the concrete there.
We can see if there's any records of who the concrete was from.
Is, is 89 within the window?
Just to be, yes.
I think it is.
Eighty-three.
Eight, okay, I could remember this, okay, thanks.
But, you know, the contractor who built the library is still in business, we can ask if, you know, ask him, but we could also do have testing if you want to be testing, but the visual tests will, will, there's no point, you, I haven't seen any of that reflective cracking.
Yeah, and as I understand it, water evaporates.
Yes.
So if, with all the water that's in there, I would expect that if there was the threat of crumbling foundation, there would be some signs of it now.
But we got to rule it out.
Well, I'm not trying, but if I'm buying a house now, I want to have a protest, I need to know that there's no pyrotite.
I thought it was required to have a test.
I think it is, yeah.
By the mortgagees.
So does anyone have any other questions, John?
I have one thing that I think probably just needs, just for clarification, I think it's the right time to put it on the table and talk about it. So there's been a lot of chatter about, this is being brought up again, the library's being brought up again, that, I just want to make a clarification, the project we talked about tonight is about renovating and improving the space, as was just discussed, and it is not, it is a separate, it is a separate project from what was voted on before and voted down. I just want to make sure that's out and clear for everybody in the room, and more, more importantly, for everybody listening at home or online, that it is a complete and separate project, it is not a big expansion. I, I just feel that's important, because it seems to be the type of thing that people are not perceiving, that is a completely separate thing. I see, Tim, you're shaking your head there, that, you know, because you're on the committee, so you know.
Or it's our charge.
Yeah, exactly, it's right in the charge, it is, it is not the, the old thing that was voted on, this is different and smaller.
And $2 million less.
And millions of dollars less, okay.
And this came after that vote, because then it was, okay, let's go, let's, exactly, let's focus on what we have and make the appropriate corrections and improvements.
Because the code does still need to be, the code issues still need to be addressed, no matter what.
Okay, I just thought that was the inappropriate time for that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, yes, thank you, John. And I want to thank the committee, because you've certainly a very talented committee, and we appreciate the work you've done in a short period of time, and if any of you would like to say anything, we'd be...
I'm sorry to work for you.
Kind of shake up on that now.
I really speak...
Boy, I knew it was going to be this tough, I would have had somebody else be the chair.
You're going to get even, aren't you?
Because that speaks volumes, you got a lot of work done though.
Even with all these gentlemen behind me, absolutely.
Good point.
I've worked for a few, few groups since I've been here, because I was looking at the map the other day at the town, and my daddy's been here not as long as Jones family. My dad moved into town with two kids in 1920, and walked for a school bus, the tire road that's in front of his, which is Pucker Street, so, you know, it's, it's been fun. So, you know, it's been fun, but we had a heck of a group, and I've been in several of these committees, and I don't want to say anything bad about some of the committees that were on before, but this, we had a good group. It was fun going to the meetings. It wasn't a chore.
Well, we appreciate what you've brought back to us because it seems to be very thorough and it seems to have met the charge that we set out. We know now that going forward, I guess we need to authorize you to go to planning and zoning and inland wetlands with a concept budget for the fine tuning of the concept budget. And is there anything else, John, that they should be looking at?
Only if there's something else the council wants them to look at.
Are there any questions you have or any thoughts, you have complications, and then you see that it doesn't quite...
Oh, this is the first I've received.
Of course.
I'd probably go home and digest it a little.
Do they have floor plans?
I sent them floor plans today, but not the whole PowerPoint, I'll give them the PowerPoint.
That'd be great.
That might be helpful, Julie. I think that your answer to your question, we're just putting our heads together, I think it's 432 feet, square feet on one floor, and the other floor it has, you know, the elevators and stuff, and it's less. Yes, it's about 800, 900 square feet of actual space more, but it's no, it's not, it's on the existing footprint, so. But, please, if you've got any further thoughts, and tomorrow, the next day, you can call any one of us, or you can tell John.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions, I just want to say that what you've laid out here is really impressive for taking the existing space and really, it's exciting to realize how you can really take that as this existing space and get so much more out of it than what you have today, so kudos to the committee.
I want to thank you also for being so very thorough.
So, do we need to do a formal motion, John?
I think it, just for the record, it'd be good to authorize the committee to, you know, proceed ahead to discuss the concept plan with planning and zoning, and while it's commissioned to get feedback in preparation to come back to the council.
Is there a motion to that affect someone?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, or any discussion on the motion?
Is there a date that we have to come back by?
Well, I, you know...
Or is it open-ended?
It's sort of open-ended, I think the suggestion was if you can get back in December, if it takes to January, because we know there has to be some fine tuning on the budget. Of course, we always hope anything, you can, if you can make any further reductions, that would be great. So, I think, I think that's kind of the thought. So, any other questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And again, thank you all for your time tonight and for...
Thank you so much for hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
It was a great presentation, thank you.
I guess we are up to reports, council reports. And I don't have much under my report.
Good night.
Good day to everyone, thanks for coming.
Night.
We're on TV, would you mind stepping into the hall for your conversation?
Thank you.
I don't have much under my report, but I did want to mention something that I think's quite important. We have a citizen who turned 100 recently and still active, still out there, and it's one of our special citizens, Angela Chick Bowen, Dr. Bowen's wife. And of course, Dr. Bowen did pass several years ago, but for many, many years, he was our doctor and he had hours, office hours in his house.
I remember that.
And, you know...
Help director.
So, we want to say, on behalf of the council, happy birthday to Chick and her 100 years, which is very, it's hard to believe she's 100 years old because she's, she's still out there and active.
Fantastic.
She's happy birthday.
That's amazing.
Her last name is spelled, is it B-O-W-E-N? Yes, thank you.
So, that's really what I had under my report.
I also want to say happy birthday to Chick, she taught my children religious education classes, St. Mary's. Also, just a very quick, brief mention that I was talking to a resident over the weekend and she had a good suggestion, and I'm not sure if this is something that we could adjust, John, at some point, but she mentioned that when she's at some of the public parks here in town, that there's trash receptacles, but there are no recyclable receptacles for water bottles and things. And would it be possible to have those placed as well?
I think Patriots Park has them. So, the issue there, and I know the Siki does, where we have tipper barrels, we have both. The issue, we could talk on staff, the issue is just wholly, trash in parks is just generally a problem with staffing levels to run around and get them. So, we'll talk and see whether there's something we can come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else under council member reports? John?
I have one. So, I attended the vaping 101 session that was held over at the Library Media Center between Nathan Hale and the high school. And I have to say, it was a real eye-opener about how prevalent it is and about how much more dangerous than cigarette smoking it is. It's widely being publicized, talked about online in ads by the companies that it's, "Oh, it's just vapor, vaping, like water vaping." And it, it's not, it's oil. It's not, a vapor would be like steam or just water vapor, it would just completely dissipate into the air. These are actually aerosols. They're aerosols that do leave micro droplets of oil, which is why you're finding people ending up in the hospital with their lungs coated with oil. This is very dangerous for our young people. I don't think they have all the information, I'm hoping this can be a small part of it. Unfortunately, the session was not very well attended, and it was a rainy night and all that stuff, but it was not very well attended, so I wanted to try to get the word out about that. Another thing that kind of really blew my mind, and I guess it shouldn't, is that, oh, the people that sell these devices got really creative. One of them, I mean, all the rest of them, you've seen all of them, most of you are probably aware of what they look like, these little devices. One of them actually looks like an Apple Watch. You can't, you really can't tell unless you closely inspect it. It works, too, it's a watch, it works. And you just press a tiny little button that's there, the unit comes off and they vape right off of that, and then they can click it back on a watch. So, it's like, good luck if you're an administrator or a teacher or something and trying to spot this, you know, this essentially contraband and stuff like that. It was mind-blowing. And it was also mind-blowing to hear about the population that's doing it is generally, how to put this creative, I'll just be blunt about it. So, it's not the same people who are doing the smoking. It's a whole different group, including athletes who do it to get pumped up before events. It's just so disturbing in so many ways and it's going to have long-reaching effects on our, on our youth. It worries me a lot. So, it was very eye-opening. I believe on the district's website, there's information about it, there's a little vaping 101 pamphlet that I got. But, just, well, great information, scary information, but I hope that the public gets more news about it, pays more attention to it, and that's all. Sorry, it was just very, very jarring going there and hearing all of that information. The presentation was put on by Yale, they came on, did a presentation, it was very, very great.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, we shall move on. Retirement of current council and inauguration of the new council. I think most of us know what happens, John, is there anything you wanted to add after than what's on there?
No, it's pretty pro forma, but just a reminder of what happens and how fast it happens, and please, God, no recounts. Because I don't know what happens.
Apparently, light refreshments will be served, that's what I'm reading, so.
That's what you're looking at, huh?
Yeah. Well, now, wait a minute. It's on the, it's on the agenda.
Serious question regarding those recounts, are registrars prepared to handle that kind of situation right now?
Well, the real issue is, our charter says that we have to swear you in the next night, so you're not having a recount by then. So, that's my own personal nightmare. I've been assured that, you know, it's just, you just do what you have to do.
So, if there's a question, would you, of any state, two candidates, would just, everyone else be sworn in?
Everyone else would be sworn in, yes.
And then you would hold on?
Yes.
So, nothing more on that? Finance Committee, Carolyn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a, it's a little lengthy, we covered quite a bit last week in our finance meeting. In reviewing the minutes, starting off the meeting, we reviewed the minutes, and in the minutes from September, we had the wrap-up for the fiscal year 19, and I had asked Amanda and John if the overage was standard. And the explanation was that, one, having an overage is something that we want in terms of being able to add to fund balance, to be able to build up our savings. And also, I think, John, you may have mentioned, or Amanda, I'm sorry, I don't remember who it was, that it was, it was a really small amount, even though it seems like a large number to most people, it's a small amount at 0.5 percent. I went back and looked because I wanted to understand again if that was something that happens normally, and Amanda did explain that, you know, we do generally have an overage, not, it's not always large, it's not always small. So, I went back and I looked at prior years, pulling up some of the reports. And so, this year, it was actually at 1.2 percent of budget. When I looked at the numbers, it was the prior year that was 0.5 percent. The year before that, which would be, so fiscal year 19, which we just closed out, was 1.2 percent. Fiscal year 18, which we closed out last year, was 0.5 percent overage. And fiscal year 17, which was the year before that, was at 1.2 percent. So, it seems like that tends to be kind of around the range, it looks like anywhere from point, half a percent to a percent seems to be about the range. So, I just wanted to understand that, it was still a new process for me, so I wanted to understand it. So, thank you for that. We went through the numbers as we do every month. And so, for the first quarter of this fiscal year, we've collected 57.7 percent of property tax revenue, and that is slightly below the same period for last year, which was at 58.2 percent. Total revenues collected, they're running about the same, 44.7 percent this year compared to 44.5 percent last year. Amanda explained we have no outliers with our expenditures, though they are up slightly when we look at this year versus last year, 26.7 percent versus 23.4 percent. With the board having spent about 18 percent of their approved budget this year compared to 16.8 percent for first quarter of last fiscal year. Cover collections are at 84 percent compared to 79.1. Did, we did ask about that, and Amanda explained that she believes it's to the diligence of our tax office. Recreation overall is doing well, you may remember at a prior meeting, there were some concerns about the numbers. Overall, recreation is doing well, although some of the expenditures, you're still not sure that they may be overstated a little bit. So, Amanda continues to review those with Wendy and Kat. And another action that they've taken is to break out Millbrook into its own account, that way you can, she can track the facilities independently of each other. The tax sale is scheduled for January 14th with the same three properties that have been on before. As previously reported, Board of Assessment Appeals had six reductions, revale's still ongoing, and the auditors will be in soon for their annual review of the prior fiscal year. Amanda shared details on the recent bonding, and you may remember, we were upgraded two levels in our bond ratings, so that we're now at double A-plus, which in turn results in lower interest rate when the town borrows, which is exactly what we saw a couple of weeks ago. So, we saw 95, just about 95.6 thousand in savings this fiscal year. The bond premium totaled $244,660, and those funds, we will be able to apply to either future debt or to offset the cost of another project. Amanda did review the revised debt schedule, and that is available in the Finance Committee agenda, if anyone wants to look at it. So, next year, we expect to have, we'll have a decrease with large drop-offs in future years, and some of those drop-offs were actually pretty sizable when we went and discussed them. And again, that whole list is, is part of the agenda for the October 15 fiscal committee, excuse me, Finance Committee meeting. And so, the committee did agree that this positions the town well for more investments. Working collaboratively, we're realizing more cost-saving opportunities for the town. The IT upgrade to the cloud-based software is underway. Amanda is in the process of converting to a fixed asset software, which was offered to the town at half price. And the board was able to get the cost of the computer project redo so that both parties now have enough funds and we are, have we started moving forward? We will be moving forward.
Still wrapping up some final pieces on the harbor end.
Okay, great, and so that should be underway pretty soon. The new transfer station scale came in, is it installed yet?
It was short. The scale company measured it wrong.
Oh, no.
So, you have two concrete ends.
Yeah.
And it fits nicely between them.
You can drop it right down in. It's a retractable scale, wow.
So, at their expense, they have to pour the concrete extender or give us, or order another scale. And they, they goofed.
So, how long will that take?
We don't know yet because they got to find a concrete company. And it's not just a, you know, pour a little slab, you got to go down.
Yeah.
So, it's not a cheap adding on, they got to peg it to, to, together. So, we don't have a timeframe yet because everyone in the world right now is trying to do concrete work.
Yeah, is that the scale that they sent, is that the scale we paid for, or?
We haven't paid for it, yeah.
I understand that the money that we allocated, is it for that scale? Not for a larger scale?
It's, it's just the length of the metal. So, they just ordered the wrong thing, and they're all custom-built, so, you know, if they can't find a concrete guy, then they just have to order the right size, length, scale, but it's, the pricing was right, they just ordered the wrong length.
So, it won't cost us anymore, is that what you're...
Well, no, I just, one, obviously I don't want the cost to change, but would it make more sense just to get the right scale rather than trying to fix?
It's just a matter of timing. To us, I think, actually, the, it doesn't matter much if it's a couple of feet shorter because right now, a car with a trailer can't fit on a scale anyway. So, the shorter length won't matter to what we measure.
So, this will fit the needs of the future plans that might be in the works at some point to move the transfer station?
Yeah.
If that opportunity comes up with this scale?
Yeah, so, you know, it's about this, this much. It doesn't matter to us that much, but, but, you know, it just won't work. So, it just takes, you know, the alternative is, they go back to the vendor and say, "Give me a larger, the right length scale." You know, the components of it are all the same, it's just the length of the steel. We will not accept welding steel on, you know, because that's just a break point. But, having where it fits in closer doesn't matter to us. So, you never know, is the answer.
Okay, we'll wait to hear more then.
It's been waiting.
Very good.
It's not a ton of fun.
Oh, boy.
For the girl softball complex, John reached out to Phil Desiato regarding an easement or even potential acquisition of his property at 240 Main Street, as that is adjacent to one of the sites under consideration. And John did review the sketch with us, it was not color-coded as Amanda normally would. At the time, there was no word back, so, John, have you heard anything from this? At the time, there was no word back. So, John, have you heard anything from Mr. Desiato?
Staff is, is now trying to, we already talked to one engineering firm.
Okay.
But we want to go through, and Wendy just forwarded a similar RFP that we're going to try to get out so that we can compare the prices from several engineering firms.
Okay.
But we have one at the landfill field looking at the methane issue, so we asked them to start working on it.
And Amanda put together a spreadsheet of homes affected by crumbling foundations, currently tracking to 47 houses, though John believes that the number will increase as part of the revale. For 2018, we had a revenue loss of $97,000. For 2019, we are already at slightly over $100,000. Some properties are off the tax rolls for years as homeowners wait to be prioritized for the needed repairs. And just to, you know, this is an issue that's going to have much greater impact to our future revenues as more homeowners file claims and their homes lose value over this. And then finally, we discovered the costs, excuse me, we discussed the cost to the town due to the registrar's error for the primary activities. So it was both the cost to the town and the impact to the finance office. So in terms of dollars, the cancellation of the original primary notice was $83.32. Legal services in connection with reviewing the registrar's performance, $1,680. Legal services in connection with the injunction, $2,572.50. For a total of $4,335.82. Not included in these costs were the cost of the legal ad and the poll worker cost. Those expenses would have been incurred by the town in a primary regardless of the registrar's errors. The registrar's office will be over budget. You may remember in our budget discussions earlier this year, the council had concerns with what was already a problem with that office staying within their budget. The total also does not include the substantial staff hours that were incurred by the town manager, the finance director, and the town clerk and her staff, which are unquantifiable. Also not included as an unknown would be any lawsuits the town could potentially incur as a result of not having machines for those voters who are visually impaired as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And Amanda did state that we haven't heard anything, right? No complaints from anybody. Okay, that still holds, good. With the matter being referred to the State Elections Enforcement Commission, should there be any fines, they would apply to the individuals involved and not to the town. So therefore, the town does not have to plan for the possibility of any penalties for that. And then one new item that did come up in our meeting was with payroll for the poll workers from the September 17th primary. W9s are required pri, excuse me, prior to a primary, and none had come in, which held up payroll processing. And as of our meeting on October fif, well, hold on, as of our meeting on October 15, three of the five poll workers had been paid as their W9s had come in, but now the five.
No one had been paid. We consider that as a batch payment, so no poll worker had been paid.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
We did not receive W9s for five hundred people. And again, they should not work until we received the W9. So that entire batch of poll workers was on hold until we received that paperwork.
Okay.
It's now been over a month. Today, we received the last document.
Okay.
So we are hoping to process it by the end of the week, but we're brandering town payroll, which is scheduled this week. So we're gonna, and we have CDBG training this week for three days straight. So we're hoping by the end of this week, if not, it'll be in next week.
Is that a normal practice to take a W9 after working?
No.
No, they're all supposed to be filed before. No one should be working without a W9 or a I9 filed with the town. And that has been made very clear to everyone in the town. The fire departments have had issues with this before. The registrars have been told on multiple occasions. Every department is very versed in this rule.
And so do we know, going off, well, not off topic, but do we know in terms of the election coming up, are all the W9s in then?
I know that the Democratic registrars have included a kind of startup package for all of the people that they'll be having working, which they've identified the two people who do not have W9s in and have provided them that form in advancing nature that they're aware that they need to reach out and help them while they work.
Okay.
We have not heard anything from the Republican registrars.
Outside of, Marge, do we have any other certified registrars coming in to oversee the election?
Not that I have been informed of, but I do not know a concrete.
And we have two weeks left to the election, so by what date do the W9s have to be in?
They just need to be really by the Monday.
The day before?
The day before time. You can come in the morning and give it to me and then go work at a poll location.
Except the falls open.
I was gonna say, except they open one before you get here, I think.
Yes, so really by the Monday, we would need to.
Okay, so you said you have most of them from the Democratic registrar, and she's following up on the others?
Because you don't have to file one. So if you've worked for the, worked at the polls before, we already have your information. It's just that first cert of time that you need, so.
And no word at all from the Republican, you said? Okay. All right, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Just one, just to point out one thing about the, the IDS loading machines?
Yep.
That I mentioned, that's a violation of federal law?
Yes, the American, Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
I had a question on the tax sale. We had gotten a letter from an attorney. Is that the attorney that we're using?
Yes.
For all three properties? And like, how come that attorney?
He has a specialization in it.
The town tax sales?
Yeah, he does probably 70 or 80% of the estate. It's very complicated and procedurally, so. We're using him because it doesn't cost us any money, number one, but he, because it's all borne by the sale. But he does it for most towns and, and it's an area of a lot of litigation. So he's been successful at avoiding that. We believe that within a week or so, one other house will be purchased, so we'll probably be down to two. And it's not per district. So it's actually good if these are all cleared up. We started with 11, I think, or so? About 11, and we're down to three, I think, two. So.
Wow.
The process, just going through the process works.
So any other questions? Thank you, Carolyn. That was a very thorough report. I guess we are down to town manager. I just wanted to mention, though, it's on consent, but everyone should be reading those personnel policies, because we're going to adopt them at the next meeting. And everybody should, you know, we're doing them in piecemeal. So hopefully, everybody has been reading them and keeping up. And if they have any questions, make sure that you get them to John at steering or someone so that we can get them answered. Because the steering committee will, it'll be the last meeting, we'll be addressing them, and then it'll be at the council meeting next council meeting. Sorry, John.
That's, so, just, you have my written report, just a couple highlights to the general public. Jones Crossing Road, I sent you pictures of the water. You can start to see there is a lot of water going through, through that area. You saw the parapets, the railing is going in this week. The binder is actually, couldn't see in the picture, but the binder is actually paved. So, and they're, they're out doing some backfilling and curbing and some landscaping work this week. So the frequent question, the most frequent question is, when's it going to open? There's going to be a gap between when the final paving comes in at the end of this month, because we keep getting pushed back by, by the vendors, because every day it rains, you get pushed back a day. But we're scheduled for the last week of October. So there may be about a week between when they're done and when the final paving goes in. We do want to close the road for that final paving, so we're having that debate depending when they really finish up, whether we open up for a couple days and then close it for a day. So we understand for the residents, it's been a nuisance, so we may lean towards that if we can. But if it's really close, then, then we'll just leave it closed, because it could just cause confusion. But Lauren did, is going to remind people to sign up for our Road Alert program so you can find out when it's open versus when it's closed. So good news, that project again appears to be coming slightly under budget, because the contractor had some alternative watering techniques that our consulting engineer agreed to and accepted then. So there was a change order that reduced the cost of the project.
That's great. Do we know roughly what that cost the town? That whole project? Or is it too soon? Yeah, it's not really done yet?
Well, we got a 50% grant, so I, I think I should just do it back on, you know.
Okay.
Let me get to the final cost. But right now, we're running kind of 50 to 60 grand to the good.
Oh, wow. Okay. Look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Wrightsmill Road, drainage project, which has been forever. We got the, the contractors are going to be starting the end of this week. The materials are already on site. The flagpole project should start this Friday. Local, local contractor was a little bitter, MCS landscaping. They brought samples just to show you what the. So two-size pavers will be in a Harry and Born pattern. And the inside edging is a slightly darker color. And so that will wrap around the circle against the granite. The granite will be moved up here later this week, and they'll be picking out and cutting, cutting the granite into four-foot sections to try to make that curve. We have one bench that's already been donated to the town, and we've ordered a second bench, because as it stands, one bench will be one side of the flagpole, one on the other. That can be dedicated to something in the future. That won't be, this, this will be done fairly quickly. But the other bench won't be delivered till like December. But it will be fairly quick to have it balanced. And I think I mentioned at last meeting that Eckert Electric is donating some time and resources into getting electricity kind of underground underneath this so they can shine on the flags in the front, because we keep getting complaints that people can't see the flag is lit from the back. And then also allow some low lighting around, kind of behind the benches, so that this courtyard area will kind of just have some subtle lighting. And the current flagpole light could actually be turned on to the town hall. So. So.
Excuse me, do you know about how much the bench is?
800 for the bench, and the plaque is expensive. It's like 300 or 400.
You don't have benches on the 50 dollar site?
Not that we'd want to put. Although Waze there has them for 120 bucks.
Did you say 400 for the flag?
I think the bench was 1100 with shipping.
Oh, with shipping.
With shipping, yeah, yeah, you got it. Is this, is it made of granite?
Yeah, it's the same bench as we have in the village.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a granite bench.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's a very.
It's not granite, no, it's metal. It's, it's black metal.
But we'll get the same, but it's not like the kind you put in your yard.
No.
Oh, I see, it's like the, the metal slats. Okay. Another, it was talked at prior meetings, was, is this have anything to do with the commemoration or remembrance of past community volunteers?
No.
That has nothing to do with this project, right?
No, we had gone through and talked about whether to engrave these, these types of bricks, and it just got too complicated, and especially as the, it's, the scale changed. I mean, we got, we had 15,000 in the budget, came in at 14,008 for the installation. We'll have some incidentals on top of that, little change orders here or there that we, that we want. The bench, we're getting out of some old town hall money that is available.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Is there any reason to consider possible fundraising? People wanted to purchase a stone and have it engraved. Is that any thought?
This type of brick doesn't do that well.
Okay.
These are, you know, concrete pavers. You don't really describe them. It just got too complicated for too small a thing. And we talked about it steering.
Extensively. It was talked extensively.
We had hard enough deciding on Plan A, B, or C. Now we're on Plan D. So just to get this done, we just want to get it done. And who knows, we may be able to cut a ribbon after next council meeting, just before, because it would be fast.
Wow.
I mean, it's only a couple days construction. But we did make it a lot smaller.
Hoping there's no rain, though.
Excellent.
The community center floor project is starting this week. I want to remind people that revale, as mentioned, change notices are scheduled to go out the second week in November or so. So maybe third week. So we're planning to have the assessor come in to council meeting in November, probably before those go out or as they're going out, so that the council can get an update on what thoughts are on, on the expected changes that we see in values. Scale, I talked about, tax sale, I talked about, and. Oh, just a quick reminder, Eric Trot, our town planner, will be sending a memo out to both political parties, reminding people about these election laws and zoning, zoning laws on election signs and state right-of-way regulations. State right, state DOT will just grab a sign that's on their property and just throw it out. And driving through the town, I have seen some signs that are within the state right-of-way. So people ought to be aware. But there's also maximum size regulations on how many, how you can have a sign up to one size per, per any lot. So one sign per lot of any size. So those are sent out every year. We will send them out again to both parties to remind people. Some of the signs may not be put up by parties, but they may know who, who they are. But there's two warnings. One, obviously, they're never allowed on town property, but they're not allowed in the state right-of-way. And the town itself runs into problems with, with things in the state right-of-way. They, they just throw them out on us. So. People will be informed of the rules. If there's any questions, they can contact either Mark Lynn, Delina, or Eric Trot in the planning office. So those are my reports, unless there's questions on my memo.
Can you just give us a quick update on the disc call?
Yeah, there, I spent some time down there today, because a person complained that we were cutting down all sorts of trees. We cut down one, maybe two rotting birch trees, white birch trees, which are always sad to go, but I have pictures of them. I went down myself and, and look, those were rotten. The rest is, was brush clearing of saplings along the path, so that our brush cutter just went through there. Those are not trees. To be a tree under, that needs to be posted and warned, it has to be four inches around at, at girth height, chest height. These were like this. So I appreciated the call. Got me out of an office on a nice day to go look at things and walk around and see how things are going. So the town crew is there today with their tool cat and a machine to do some leg rubbing and so forth. Volunteers are just hard. It's hard to get volunteers to show up. They're trying hard, they've done a lot of good work. But we had a break in the schedule, something else that fell through, so we had some people down there doing some work on the last three holes that are in the woods. The other holes, they're still around the pond, are, are still in process. Right now, the signs have been ordered. We're waiting for a delivery date on the signs. We don't want to open the course until the signs are up, because it has all the rules, regulations, safety precautions and so forth. So for the first five holes around the pond, and there's really a sixth hole, which is a practice hole, so you could actually do six holes. Those should be done this fall. Am I looking at the three holes that are in the woods? That's not going to happen this fall, because there's, there's two stream crossings that have to happen. They have all the permits. But somebody has to build kind of those little wood platform bridges. bridges. Unless the volunteers have a plan for that, and they're already in the works, but those last three holes in the woods will be spring.
Sounds like there's some great improvements going on down there.
So a lot of, a lot of good effort is going on. Meanwhile, I was down there, and we have money for, can't create their improvements, and they're getting all the moss off the roofs of the buildings, power washing. And they'll come back and stain the buildings.
Can we go over something with the pavilion, too?
The pavilion, we're looking, we're supposed to do the roof. They're staining the inside of the pavilion, because the wood's drying out, so that's all supposed to be happening over the next... The pavilion in particular is supposed to happen this fall, the staining of the cabins may be spring, depends on the weather holds. But the pavilion was, and we're not so sure we're replacing the roof yet. There's a lot of moss on it, and there's some type of nicks that this guy's putting on there that kills the moss, and then they power wash it off. And the roof doesn't look as bad underneath it. So we're going to let the moss kind of die, be power washed off, and look at it. But when you look closely at it, it looks like the roof has a few more years, and we'd rather spend the money on getting the wood stabilized. So progress is, the guy was down there today doing the washing, and so I got to see trail making and cleaning of buildings.
Excellent.
On a nice day that I don't get out of the office that much.
Sounds like it was a real walk in the park.
And does the person who complained, does that person understand?
I called the person back and left a message, because I didn't take my call. But there was some, so I don't know. The dates, I don't, I provided the message, but whether it was received or not, there was some confusion over how much it was budgeted for the project. And I, once it became clarified, it's a $10,000 grant, not a $5,000 grant. Right now, we have, she asked how much was left, and it's $685.
At least she called and asked, and didn't go by what other people said for assumptions, so that's good.
So again, unless there's other questions.
Just on your background memo, you talked about a conference call that I assumed was with Eversource. Do we have all power back in town from last week?
Yeah, pretty much all power is back up by Friday night.
Friday, yeah.
There's still some cleanup work. The communications with Eversource was dismal. I say a lot of that, it was probably our representative was on vacation. They did provide a coverage person who was trying, but I think it was just, the towns above us were really, really bad, and the summers didn't have school for days. So they have a process of proprietary ones, which are no way in or out. We really had one, which took them too long to get to at the end of this dirt road.
Which road? Which road was that?
This dirt road that's like fine and perfect and shit.
Riley Mountain Road?
Somebody's getting wild.
Did it keep people forgetting out?
Riley Mountain Trail Mile?
The problem is that Eversource maps still show that Riley Mountain goes through to 44. Obviously, it hasn't since 1938.
It stops at meter.
They should try it, right?
I wouldn't go down that hill. You can see where the road used to be, but the town abandoned it. So we got that cleared up on Friday. They moved and got a crew up there.
Right before the school buses came down. They did a good job.
Oh, good.
Nice.
I have a question, and thank you for bringing up the storm. The area on Broadway between Grant Hill and Tedford, that's the second storm where I think a large branch has fallen. Is there, like, is there a need maybe for additional tree work there? Because it's...
How many hundreds of thousands do you want to give me?
Well, no, I'm just asking because it's in the same spot as it was last time, and that's why I was just wondering.
Yeah, so I live on Silver Street, and every storm, a tree on Silver Street goes down and takes out the power.
And the end of Wrightsmill and Kim's Road.
You can name the spots, and you go down Silver Street or Wrightsmill Road, and there's probably 40 trees that would have to come down at a thousand apiece. So we could spend our whole budget on just one half mile of road.
Then you have to hit Parker Street.
Probably Riley Mountain Road.
I'm just saying.
It's all going to fill in at some point.
So we did have tenet tree in town for four days, trying to catch up on some work.
I know they did work on Brigham.
Yes, that was one of the priorities, because Brigham, they were like leaning over the road.
I wait every day when I go home from this meeting, when they fall in front of me like it did one night, so it's not... It is scary down these roads when you think about trees. You look at all the trees on the roads that are...
We are not alone. There's a major discussion across the state on what they're going to do about this.
Especially the eggs to the ash.
Yeah, and the oaks got really...
Hit by a...
They were quite a gypsy moss.
Yeah, yeah.
We're better off, a little better off, if you go southeast of us, and it's just, you drag down some of the roads, and you just, they're all dead. Everyone on the side of the road, they're all dead.
I know, I've got one to come down. My neighbor's got three or four to come down, so...
I was stumped.
No problem.
So microgrid update, or cogent update?
Cogent, yes. Some cogent thoughts here.
We had a good discussion on Friday. They're still working through their issues with Eversource, waiting for some plan designs. You know, it's clear they're spending a lot of time, we're here every Wednesday, looking at the things and how to wire, how to get things done. But until they get the pricing from Eversource, and they're still working on loans, they're having some issues. Some of the people that they want to borrow money from are balking at the change in the contract that DEEP did, that they won't make payments towards these big, you know, gaps instead of kind of monthly payments. So we're going to wait and see, but if we need to, I said that we would get Senator Norm Needleman from Essex and Tim Eckert, Representative Eckert, both of which serve on energy. Norm, Senator Needleman is the chair of the Energy Technology Committee, and that's a committee that Representative Eckert is also on, so we would try to seek a meeting with the Commissioner of the DEEP to see if there's anything we can put down.
Yeah, I think that's a definite action that needs to happen, because, I mean, that's a major problem with that, that they've thrown at the microgrid.
I mean, it's killing a cash flow issue. They have to borrow money.
Yeah. And that's not fair to them.
It's not, no.
How that, how that turned out, yeah, that's not fair to them.
But, you know, they're, we have the feeling they're open and honest with us on things that they can be open and honest. I mean, with that some proprietary or really their internal pricing demands, but we'll see what happens this Friday. But it was, you know, we knew a lot of what happened, because they were out verifying a lot of the locations the prior Wednesday and how to make everything work together. But the big thing is they're waiting for, you know, a lot of information from Eversource on how it's going to work and how much they're going to charge.
Can you just remind me what justification was between switching terminology from microgrid to cogent?
Just people understand a little bit more what a cogent is and...
Wasn't there some fiscal aspect to that?
There's a lot of fiscal aspect.
So the good...
We can call it, we can call it whatever we want. But for pricing, by a cogent project, all natural gas distribution charges are waived, which is a big chunk of the natural gas bill.
So maybe we should start shifting how we're referring to it in the minute, in the agendas?
That's really for the documents that we sign with these outside agencies, but, you know, but...
It'll be both. I think you said it before. It will be both, so we can call it both.
Fair enough.
Microgrid and cogeneration.
Microgrid through cogeneration.
Through cogent, there you go.
But anyways, nobody in the citizens ever know what a microgrid is. It's a small grid.
It's a very tiny grid. Oh, jeez. I'm sorry, was that up?
But I don't know. Do people, people know what cogeneration? Oh, it's a senior and toddler.
What time are we getting into here? Oh, yes, it appears to be, yeah, it's 9:56 PM. Okay.
So unless there's anything else on the...
Do you think Eversource supports this type of project?
They're the ones that are going to make the money out of this. They're going to get $4 million bucks or so to install the switch here. They don't care about where, who, they don't sell power anymore, so they don't really care about that. You know, they just sort of pass through. So I don't know their real feelings on it, but they will make money and employ their workers to build the system. So I think they would want to do it.
You would think, you'd think.
So we can also talk to our Eversource rep, who happens to also be a state senator, to see if he wants to sit in on it. Kevin Wychkos would be willing to, I'm sure, if we asked him. But there's a little conflict, because he works for Eversource, too. Public information meeting, just want to remind people that on the 23rd of this month, which is coming right up, we have a public information meeting on the folly lane bridge replacement. No big surprises there, in my opinion. We're replacing it with a bridge just slightly wider, just slightly longer, but it's going to go, you know, go right into the rock that's already there. We don't have to do big abutments and so forth. So it should be a fairly simple project. Unfortunately, it's, you know, during the summer when cullfords are going to be there, but you can't do bridges in Oire, so that's it.
Apart from the course.
Okay. unfinished business, new business?
So under the contracts, we do have a ton of agreements with both public, with the public works and the police. We may want to go into executive session first to talk about them before you come out and decide what you want to do on that, so we can defer action on that.
The memorandum of understanding, which we need to authorize you to sign once they are approved by the two fire departments and to bring them back if they have any questions.
Yeah, so the real issue here is, and we could fill in the dates, I didn't have time to look up the dates on the contract, so before we sign, we can fill in the dates that are actually in the contract. The real issue here is, this is detailing a process that, you know, we'd go through if, you know, we don't want to spend a lot of time on, you know, drafting the changes and the ordinance that need to be done, but I gave you kind of a sample of that. Duncan actually did review that and get some additional information, so that's kind of done before we put it in the form of an ordinance. We want to make sure that we're all on board before we go through a lot, a lot more effort. So the MOU allows us to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page. Both departments can decide, yes, we're heading down this path, working on the good work of the merger committee in terms of their format. But then that committee will need to forward you job descriptions to adopt for the various positions on that org chart. And we need to change the ordinances to reflect the changing of positions and what the departments look like and how the fire EMS department functions. And then kind of go through a process to hire and get that, those people, hire's not the right word, select the people for those various departments, and then kind of get towards finalizing what are, what's the town's relationship with the associations. At this point, I'm assuming that both the associations won't want to continue as fire associations under the law, as 501(c)(3)Cs, and do things that they would like to do. But the, so people would be members of the town fire EMS department and also these various fire associations if they choose to, they don't need to. But there's a lot of goodwill, good civic duties that these groups and organizations do. So that's, the new contract will be a relationship between the town and the fire association, which would grant them kind of some use of the buildings, and we need to go through who's going to do what for the buildings, but allow the town council in the future to either provide any kind of service, like using the buildings, or if you want to give them a grant, depending what other outside services, ground fire, they want to do for the town. So those are in-depth, lengthy discussions to have with those, what's the future of those associations. But, so the ordinance would allow us, you saw in the scribbling handwriting that I have, that it would allow the town to still give grants to those associations. So those are separate issues, but very important issues of what the future relationship between the town and the associations are. So to, again, be very clear, what the MOU does is to, would be two separate agreements that North County Volunteer Fire would have a merger with the town department, and CVFA would have a merger with the town department. So they're both merging into us, not together.
So, John, just, there's just one minor edit on one of them. The first one, is it missing a word?
The CVFA?
Yeah, CVFA. The second paragraph, whereas a town and CVFA are parties, is it missing a word?
Thank you.
The other two have it, so... So you just need that authorization to sign, or dependent upon the agreement?
If they agree, as you said, if they agree that we could just sign it, if they have some issues, they'd have to come back, and the council would have to reauthorize the change.
A move that we authorize, John?
Go ahead. I just have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the whole memorandum of understanding, both of the departments are volunteer departments. Is there a way to, should we specify that when they're for the town fire and EMS, that that is also a volunteer department? Is there a distinction? These people all volunteer for these? And it's in their association names, but then it doesn't say it where, you know, the town fire and EMS department.
Yeah, that's kind of a good point, John. Good point, I see. What have we, what have we already put things out that just say Coventry?
Well, our, our...
18 exists.
Our current ordinance are just Coventry, Coventry Fire EMS department, so we don't have it there, so we'd have to...
But even language, I'm not saying we necessarily have to change the name, but somewhere's in the language specified that this is...
Could you do it parenthetically, a volunteer?
Shall volunteers?
Townwide Volunteer Fire and EMS, instead of just insert volunteer in there? Become part of a unified townwide volunteer fire.
Yeah, you could do that. So in a third where, whereas, second sentence?
Yep.
After townwide add the word volunteer.
In both, each of the memoriam.
So do we need to, down below where it says they're going to become a part of the Town of Coventry Volunteer Fire Department?
See, that changes the name.
That's the true name. We need to leave that alone. I think it says it above, if you add the word volunteer.
As long as we put it in the top part. Yeah, to be amended, and they're known as the Town of Coventry Fire Department, so that, I think, I think it does work.
Yep.
So, John, you started a motion?
Yeah, I move that we authorize John to enter into these agreements.
As amended?
As amended.
I will second that.
Subject to the agreement of the fire department?
Absolutely, yes, subject to that.
Is there a second?
Truly seconded.
Truly seconded, okay. Any further discussion? With the idea that if they don't, you'll just bring it back to the council?
If they have some issues, or that, or if...
Changes in wording?
Obviously, they decide against pursuing ahead at this time, you know, I don't sign it, because we don't have an agreement, but I think you heard that they were helping to keep this moving.
I just want to say this is a nice, big step in the right direction here, the common goal at the end of this, a unified department and town.
Agreed, yeah.
Absolutely. It'll keep it moving.
So any further discussion? All in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Anderson. Motion carries, Jan Anderson.
Adam, Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes one dash two hundred, parentheses six, parentheses E, discussion of any matter which would result in disclosure of public record to the information therein contained described in subsection B of section one dash two-ten with the following people in attendance: the town council members present, our town manager, John Assessor, and our finance director, Anna Bynes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second strongly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second.